Joyce, you call the roll voice please.
That's Senator Moore.
Present.
That's Senator Sager. That's Senator Fox.
Present.
That's Senator Williams.
Present.
Mayor Durham.
Present. All right, with the quorum present, I'll call this meeting to order. This is a regular scheduled meeting for August 10th, 2017. We'll start with a word of prayer and a pledge. Chatsfield Police and Frasier and Robin Police and pledge afterwards.
Pray. Father, we do thank you for the day and thank you for your blessings and thank you for life this day. And Father, we just pray you'd lead us and guide us in all that we do that would honor you. Father, we just thank you for wisdom. We thank you for understanding. And Father, I pray now you help supply it to all decisions. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, guys. Behind tab number one is the minutes of the meeting. There's no changes or additions or durations. I already have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I got a motion to approve.
I'll second, but Mayor, I want to say something if I can, please.
Absolutely.
On the, I voted no on the resolution to hire the three firemen last time, and I wish the minutes to reflect that I've changed my vote to yes. And with the, I've been thinking about this, and with the advent of the college coming to town, I think we're going to need more firemen, more police officers, more public works members, and I just wanted the minutes to reflect that I have voted yes on this.
All right. If that's appropriate. That's, so you're going to say that you changed your vote to yes? I don't know how to do that formally, but...
Just, you just did it, Mayor. Approve the minutes to reflect it that way.
All right. So, any other additions or changes to the minutes? If there are no addition, change to the minutes, have them, if you approve of those, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
And both, and that is true. Minutes are approved. All right. So, I really don't have anything. I don't have anything. I'm sort of lost. Thank you. I got one. I'm used to jockeying these things down. I'm lost my mind. I don't have any specific business today. Chris, I'll turn the table over to you.
Thank you. I'd just like to, I'd like to start off with thanking a few folks this morning. I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce for the work you did on the bicentennial celebration. Great success. Everybody enjoyed it. Just want to thank you and Ryan and everybody that was involved in that. Also, Main Street, I'd like to thank April Judkins and everybody for the bomb festival. I know there's a lot of hard work that goes into that to make that a success. I want to thank you and everybody involved there. Our city departments as well. Every department's involved in the celebration, the bomb festival, the flash flooding. A lot of things going on. I'd just like to thank our city employees for their help. Governor Bill Haslam and Barry Dallas for the announcement they made at the bicentennial, bringing a four-year college into Larch County is tremendous news. I'd like to thank those guys as well as everybody working behind the scenes to get a college here in Larch County. Also, I want to thank Alice Betts and all the folks at Babe Ruth for bringing that event to town. Again, a lot of people don't take the time to say thank you for the hard work involved in that. Just want to thank you and your folks for the work you've done. And last, the Murray County and Columbia rescue efforts. Their, their work in coming to Lawrenceburg and helping during the flash flood efforts. So, I just want to thank a lot of folks. Without everybody working like this, Lawrenceburg would not be the city that it is. So, just want to thank those folks. And I've got Jay Moore here this morning for Department Manager Report.
So, while you're coming up, Jay, let me just say, Jerry, you're, I wish you'd pass on to Jeff Quipton, his team, Lee Fraser and her team, how much we appreciate what they've done on the Babe Ruth fields. I went over and looked at the Babe Ruth field. It is unreal, the condition of it, so.
Sure, I appreciate that.
Appreciate that. All right. Jay, you want to go ahead?
Morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
Just want to give you an update on the department. As you know, a few months back, we received a grant from FM Global for a Sparky outfit costume with a heat cooling vest and the fans and all. We've actually utilized that in the back-to-school program this year. We've had it at three elementary schools in the morning trying to help the police department out to get the traffic to slow down, the drivers to realize schools back in session and all. I've had good response out of that, a lot of comments. I've got a lot of phone calls, a lot of comments out of that. So, it's been a good program that we've been a part of. We will also use that course in schools. It'll be at the fair. Good, good PR piece of equipment and public, fire prevention piece of equipment. Want to touch on, as all of you know, we've had, we've had a busy last couple of weeks at the Fire Department and the Police Department combined. We had a plane crash, you know, out the airport that we took care of and all that's been turned over to the FAA. The flood event that we had, that was on July the 28th, on Friday. We, the Fire Department alone responded to 17 incidents that day within 12 hours. That is a, a record in our department as far as records are kept. We normally, our high call volume days is 16, 17 calls in a 24-hour period. Of those calls, we had a work in apartment fire on Nixon Avenue in the middle of the port and pouring down rain flood. We had a fire alarm activation that we had to respond to, seven water rescues. The majority of those water rescues was in the county. The county's flipwater team and us worked hand in hand, and they were, as, as we were low-staffed, I think they had two personnel and we had like five or six personnels, all we had. That's, hence, that's why I called for Murray County and Columbia to come in. We've been there several times and helped them over the, over the years, and they came down here a few times and they very graciously called me back on the phone, wanted to know what I needed, and they were on the way. As far as water rescues was concerned, they were on the way to Big Fork Springs out west, northwest of town where we had people trapped in a house. They got about a half a mile away, and we canceled them and followed to the station. We kept them in Lawrenceburg until about 2:00 PM that afternoon because our fear was all this started north and all of our, as everybody knows our geography, all the water goes south. And we were afraid that we were going to have more issues lower red area because it started raining low red pretty heavy. While they were here, Columbia Fire Department actually responded to this fire alarm activation at the jail because we had all of our units tied up except for one on medical calls in the city. So, they actually, when they came down, they brought, Columbia Fire brought two boats, a shift commander and an engine company, and Murray County brought two boats, their special operations trailer and an EMS unit. That's their staff, that's their general staffing when they respond to a slipwater event wherever they go. So, we had, we had plenty of people here. I think Murray County had a total of 17 people, personnel here at one time that they sent to help us. Don't want to leave Hornwall out. Hornwall actually brought four people, personnel over, and we staged them at the Quitmark in Somertown trying to keep somebody on the north end of the county because that's where it all started. And they stayed there till about 12 o'clock, and we released them. So, great mutual aid responses from all those folks. We had, actually had one technical rescue here on the square. We had an individual on the roof that couldn't get down, and we had to take care of them during that, during this process also. Want to touch on, was contacted yesterday through the Tennessee Fire Chiefs Mutual Aid System, which works through TEMA, which is where we have responded to South Carolina, responded to Chatham County in 2010 May. All the billing situations, you know, we billed and we worked our way through it. It's always been the after fact. Well, we are working for the Fire Chiefs Association and Mutual Aid Program on mission-ready packages, and that's something I'll be working with. I have to work with Linda and Margaret on some. We're going to have a mission-ready package, so if we get the phone call, that organization, wherever we're going, to South Carolina, Alabama, Chatham County, wherever the case may be, they know what it's going to cost them per hour for us to respond there. To, where the city's not out any kind of money or anything like that. Rutherford County has this done. The Chris Clark, which is Assistant Chief for Laverne, me and him have worked real close in the 2010 flood and other calls across the state we've been on. He contacted me yesterday. He's got Rutherford County done, and he's heading it up in Middle Tennessee. Our county will be the next county that's going to, we're going to tackle because he thinks that highly of our department because we work so closely together, and I appreciate that. But that will give us, that will give us a heads up as far as cost analysis of what it's going to cost to go somewhere else. Now, an event like we had the other day, you know, that's a neighbor, a neighboring department helping a neighboring department. This will, this will actually take effect when there is a TEMA-declared situation, and we'll be given a mission number, and all that reimbursement will be okay through the, through the state and the federal government. So, that don't happen a lot, but it has happened several times during, during my reign at the Fire Department that we've had to go places. That's really all I've got, just trying to update. On the agenda today, you'll see we've got an air compressor requesting permission to receive bids for an air compressor that we had on a, we got on a FEMA grant to fund. That will help the department drastically at Station One. We've actually moved the one that was at Station One to Station Two because the one that was at Station Two has been down for about six, seven years, and it was bought 33 years ago. So, this is actually the first compressor since the one that we moved, which was bought like in 2000, 2001 off of FEMA grant. So, this will help us upgrade our system, rebuild field at both stations. As you know, the newer you get, the more economy are to run and the more bottles we can fill quicker, which will make it a better service to the city. But that's all I've got. Appreciate it, and thank you very much.
One question. Looking into the future a little bit since the college has been announced, and I don't know when they'll start construction of it. But we need that Fire Department placed on that West Point Road area at some point in time to be quicker to respond to that area in case something happened.
It will be...
And would there be grants available?
As we speak right now, there's no grants available for the fire station itself. Those, we've had one or two of those come along, we've applied. The last one we applied for was called a LEED grant. It was a green, a green, excuse me, a LEED grant. It's called a green building. We applied for that grant, and one of the contributing factors that was not getting is we didn't own the property. You know, we had any kind of money as far as we were going to get the property, but we didn't technically have it dedicated to us. Those, there's not been a fire station grant through the federal government since that time. Now, grants as far as staffing, yes, there'd be grants, just like our staffing grant we got now. You know, we could get a grant to help pay, we could apply for, and hopefully we'd get the grant to pay for the staffing for three years on a percentage basis. Fire truck wise for it, you know, we can apply for a grant, and we may or may not get it. It's like a tanker grant, you know, we've applied for it. And that's kind of the direction I was going on tanker grant if we were to get it this year's in hopes of us being able to put a little bit of money with it and go from a tanker to a pumper tanker, and then we open Station Three, we've got that piece of equipment. We've solved our three X problem because we've got the tank and the pumper tanker, but we've also got a piece of equipment we could run as a first-out engine at Station Three, cannot have to buy a piece of equipment. But as of right now, we don't have, we haven't been awarded that a grant. To be honest, I don't look for us to be awarded because they're getting real close to the end of awarding those grants. But we have done great on the FEMA grants this year. We're 50-50. We applied for four, and we've got two. So, we can't, we can't gripe about that. But, you know, we're, we're going places. But yes, that, in my opinion, that station, somewhere in that area, either where we've got it spotted at or however the city's going to grow to accommodate that, that station would be really needed for a faster response because that station is going to get there a lot quicker than Station One, you know, to that area.
Have you ever run a test run on that, see what the difference is in the time?
I haven't run it from Station One, but I know from where the fire station is on, where we've, where we've got it spotted there at the Old Crockett School property to the bypass and 43, you'll be there in four minutes or less. And it's a straight, I mean, your, your time consuming is getting on the bypass. Getting on the bypass, there's no, I mean, it's a straight shot, no stopping, no starting. And that's the problem from Station One is you've got so many crooks and turns before you never hit the highway to go straight to get out to there, you know, so. Plus, you've got the Richardson Acres area that, you know, that we really need, we really need a little bit closer coverage in. And I think it's in the, in the reports, the weekly reports that we've been getting out, you've seen that number of calls in that, what I call the Station Three area, and it's just technically, I'm just calling, you know, the area that they, their immediate response area. And I'm including 43 south from the bypass, all Richardson Acres, anything west of David Crockett State Park. I think you've seen that call volume grow in the last two years. You know, we were averaging like 10 calls a month now out there, and now we're over, we're probably 12 to 15 calls a month in those areas now. So, the, the call volume is increasing with the college coming in, that call volume is only going to increase more when that does happen. You know, as housing goes up to accommodate that in that area, the call volume is still going to increase even more as time goes on.
Yeah. Well, if, if this, if this thing takes off like I think it will, we're going to need a lot more firemen, a lot more police officers, DPW, we're going to need a lot more everything.
Right.
Yeah, because it'll, that area will grow...
Pretty quickly.
Pretty quickly. Cheryl Witt.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good report, Jay. Thank you. All right. Chris, you got anything else to say?
I've got nothing.
All right. So, Alan, I'll turn the table over to you for your new business and legal stuff.
Thank you, Mayor. First matter today is the public hearing on the budget ordinance, which is ordinance 1207. It's been advertised for, to take place today, and would anyone here care to address the board concerning ordinance 1207, budget for July 1, 17 to 18? Any comments? Since there aren't any, Mayor, the next matter is ordinance 1207, an ordinance of the City of Lawrenceburg adopting the annual budget and tax rate for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017 and ending June 30, 2018. This is adopting the same tax rate of 1.4368 per $100 of assessed value on all real and personal property. Public hearing has been held. After being properly advertised, it is here for a second and final reading today.
All right, gentlemen, I want your pleasure on this ordinance. I got a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on this ordinance? Seeing no, if you're in favor of ordinance number 1207, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And ordinance number 1207 is approved.
Next gentleman, ordinance 1208, an ordinance to amend ordinance 1090 entitled Personnel Rules and Regulations of City of Lawrenceburg and to amend section six, Separations, Discipline, Appeals and Grievances, H Disciplinary Actions of Lawrenceburg Municipal Code. This is here for second and final reading also.
Motion to approve. I got a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on this ordinance? Seeing no, if you're in favor of ordinance number 1208, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And ordinance number 1208 is approved.
Next, ordinance 1209, an ordinance to amend ordinance 789 entitled the zoning ordinance of City of Lawrenceburg. This is to rezone property belonging to the Industrial Development Board on the east side of Rimkey Drive, requesting the property to be Zoned C5 from Industrial Two. Ordinance was filed on July 31st. It has been based on a recommendation of the Planning Commission, and is here for first reading today.
Gentlemen, I want your pleasure on this ordinance. Got a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. And our planning commission representative is not here today. What particular piece of property is this? East of Rimkey? Oh, this is, this is the Murray office. This is the office portion of the Murray facility. That's what this is. I'm used to saying Pan and Drive, so. All right. I wonder what this is. Any discussion on this? Seeing no discussion, if you're in, if you're in favor of ordinance number 1209, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And ordinance number 1209 moves to second reading.
Mayor, there will have to be a public hearing on this. Not sure about the dates at this point. We won't have it advertised for the next meeting, so it, the, it'll be September 4th and take final action, I think. Next gentleman, ordinance 1210, an ordinance of the Board of Mayor and Council of the City of Lawrenceburg to regulate junk vehicles on public and private property within the City of Lawrenceburg, Tennessee. That is here for first reading today.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. We got any discussion on this? Seeing no discussion, if you're in favor of ordinance number 1210, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And ordinance number 1210 moves to second reading.
Ordinance 1211, an ordinance to amend 1179 entitled Budget Appropriations of Revenue and Expenditures for the 1617 fiscal year of the City of Lawrenceburg. This is to adopt various fund balance transfers and housekeeping mostly, and that's here for first reading today.
All right. I got a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on ordinance 1211? Seeing none, if you're in favor of ordinance number 1211, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that ordinance moves to second reading.
Next, a resolution of the Board of Mayor and Council of the City of Lawrenceburg to authorize the Lawrenceburg Fire Department to request bids for a breathing air compressor, and that's here for your consideration.
Motion to approve. I got a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, if you're in favor of this resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution's approved.
Next, a resolution of the Board of Mayor and Council of the City of Lawrenceburg to declare certain property in the Fire Department as surplus to be sold on the web. This is a 354 pickup truck and a Maeco breathing air compressor not working, and that's here for your consideration.
Motion to approve. I got a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on this? Seeing no discussion, if you're in favor of this resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that resolution is approved.
Next, a resolution of the Board of Mayor and Council of the City of Lawrenceburg to reappoint Bobby Offerd to Lawrenceburg Historical Zoning Commission. His term to expire August 12th, 2022. That's for reconsideration.
Motion to approve.
I got a motion to approve. Second.
And a second. Any discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, if you're in favor of this resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And this resolution is approved.
Next gentleman, a resolution of the Board of Mayor and Council of the City of Lawrenceburg to reappoint Ben Luna as the City of Lawrenceburg's representative on the Lawrenceburg Lawrence County Airport Board to replace Pat Hudgens, and that's for your consideration.
Motion to approve. I got a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on this?
I don't know what Ben knows about airplanes, but...
Absolutely.
None that the, whatever goes up must come back?
I, I do know this, he can't fly a drone, so...
Was he fined the other day?
Yeah, he's the one that crashed it on the square during the bicentennial celebration.
All right, well, let's vote on this before we forget. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that's approved.
Maybe he wants to watch.
Mayor, that's all my business. I got a couple of things to pass along, pass along to Jerry's crew and Pam Kemp's crew. Thank you for all you're doing at the park. And then, Mr. Mayor, I have a presentation for the City of Lawrenceburg. You want Mayor to be able to accept. This is the Marius D. Bonacci Post-City Award. Mr. Bonacci's daughter, Lorraine Coriel, comes to the 13, 15-year-old World Series every year to make this presentation. Her father, Mr. Bonacci, had a 13-year-old son in 1951 that there was not organized baseball available for him. So, he and 10 guys in New Jersey got together and formed what was called the Little Big League to take over for Little League in 1951, and then that was very confusing, and so they adopted the Babe Ruth League after that. But her, her father was the founding father of Babe Ruth baseball, and she's a real, a real fireball. It's great, it's great to see her, and she comes to every one of these to make this award. And on behalf of Ms. Coriel and Babe Ruth Organization, the City of Lawrenceburg is being awarded this Post-City Award.
Thank you.
I wonder if they had to give Babe Ruth any kind of a draw back in the day? He was already dead over there, wasn't he?
Yeah, he was.
Reckon they had to give his family anything, to use his name?
What do you think there, Ron?
I think probably dead.
Probably still alive.
They probably did, and in case anybody doesn't, doesn't know, we're starting playing baseball this afternoon, 3:00. We had a great opening banquet last night. Scott McGregor was our speaker, and for you all that didn't get the, the chance to hear him, he, he had a great story back in 19, I think it was 69. He was the most valuable player of the Babe Ruth World Series as a 15-year-old. They said he, he was from El Segundo, California, and they had two pitchers on that team, and they could pitch seven innings, and they pitched every other game in the World Series and won it. And then he had the, also had the distinction of being the World Series MVP in 1983 for the Baltimore Orioles. Had a long career with the Orioles, and it still works for him. He's in their coaching and their, in their farm system. He did a great job last night. So, if you haven't got tickets, they are available at the door. I mean, a weekly pass is $25, and that'll get you in to 25 games. Hope everybody will make their way to, we've got some outstanding teams with, a team from Tri Valley, California, which is out close to Oakland, and San Francisco was the two-time defending champion. So, they're, they're trying to get three in a row here, and they, they've got some outstanding looking kids. They all passed the eye test, and so they're, they're going to...
They're good size, aren't they?
They're going to be hard to handle. We had skills competition yesterday, and we only had one young man that hit the ball out of Tom Cruise's field in the home run derby, and he managed to hit out five. So, I'm kind of excited about seeing what he can do against real...
Where was he from, Mayor?
He was from Camas, Washougal, Washington.
Okay.
And stout young man, and like I say, the, with the scoring system, the second-place team came, had five points, and he had 27. So, you know, it was, it looks like an outstanding, and you know, there's some great, great athletes there. It's, so, my recommendation to you is come watch the baseball and pray for no more rain.
Who plays, who plays at 3:00?
Connecticut and Wisconsin play on Trap Field, and then California plays at 3:30. I can't remember who they're playing today. It may be New Jersey.
Is Lawrenceburg playing there?
They play at 8:00 tonight against Bismarck, North Dakota. And Marshall County plays Sarasota, Florida. They both start after the opening ceremonies at 6:30, and probably game time will be about 8:00 for those two. So, I hope everybody will come and enjoy. Juana's Club's going to have shaved prime rib and barbecue tonight. going to have shaved prime rib and barbecue tonight, and along with all the other amenities, and it's the place to be the next seven days, folks, I promise you.
Thank you, Al, thank you for all the hard work that you put in on too, so. Any other business coming forward, Board?
Motion to approve, Jay.
I got a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And a second, and this meeting's adjourned.